Okay. Roll call, please. Here.
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 Here. Sooner or later. Okay, public comments, I this time set aside for members of the public to speak on items not on the agenda. We do have a public comment, but it's for a particular item, so I'll hold on to that. Seeing no other public comments. Let's go to items of study and the code enforcement officers' report. I assume David you do.
Good morning, Vice President Schaefer, members of the board. This report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. For the month of June, the CMSD interim code enforcement officer focuses efforts on patrols in various parts of the community. The goal is to identify and deter instances of scavenging in residential trash carts left within public view. In the month of June, the district saw a number of complaints filed with CMSD interim code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. As with most scavenging complaints, the alleged violations take place in the early morning hours. In order to address this resident concerns, the CMSD interim code enforcement officer is patrolling the streets by 6:30 a.m. Included below are instances of scavengings that were detected while the officer was investigating specific complaints. In the month of June, I caught three scavengers. Wallace Avenue. Eldon. And then another one on Eldon as well. Any questions on that so far?
Maybe a comment, David, I I think all of us kind of watch our areas, you know, that we live in and things are working. And traditionally, we've had issues on Royal Palm Alley. And I've noticed over the last several weeks, probably. Those are most of those are behind my office are for for families, so they they have individual carts, right? And they're all in enclosures, but I noticed that a lot of the enclosures are overflowing. And I don't know whether it's just people moving. Maybe it is first part of the month with people moving into out of those apartments. But I've noticed a particular young man on a bicycle who's been pretty constant. I haven't seen him before, so he's kind of a new guy. If you get a chance, maybe take a look at Royal Palm on.
I do try to go in there, you know, on on just various different days because it doesn't have to be trash day in that particular section because the carts are accessible pretty much any time.
It it seems to be Mondays that I've noticed him more often than not, and obviously after the weekends.
Yeah, yeah, I'll increase patrols through there and see if I can deter that, you know, activity.
What's really hard is to to watch the residences are taking their trash out. You see them giving stuff to the they actually give them to these guys.
Yeah.
We're not gonna I don't know how we're gonna stem that. I don't think there's any way, but just a thought for you.
Thank you. In the month of June, for trash container enforcement, there were a few customer complaints reported to the district headquarters regarding trash carts in public view. The following a list of location where trash cart violations were found and addressed by the courtesy notice process. A total of eighty-one cases last month in June depicted by all the streets there on the following pages. Any questions about that?
Yeah, I sorry, sorry to belabor things, but just as kind of a question or a comment to CRNR. In the northern part of Mesa Verde right now, we have curb and gutter work going on, which I won't grandstand about that because it's it's ridiculous, whatever they're doing is there's no place to park. There is literally, they block off every street, there's no parking from now until the end of July on our streets. And cars are all over the place. I don't know if that's posing any issues to your your route drivers. But these constructions, they have piles of stuff everywhere, they have cones. And I it probably is causing some accessibility problems for you guys. And we may get some calls about carts being messed up because they can't put them back down where they pick them up. I mean, it's so just a please. This is Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
City waited till schools up before they started.
Well, it's if I don't know whether it's the city, I'm not gonna blame the city. I think it's the contractor that they're using. They put these cones up and they say no parking from seven thirty till five, right? For for like fifteen day for three weeks. And they might be working in one area, but they're not working everywhere at the same time.
Yeah.
Arlene, you had a comment.
I just wanted to make a comment. I think the newsletter that went out really helps because what has happened is at least in my area that people are taking if they're laid on the cans, they turn around and put them up on the curb. You know, so that just what the newsletter says to do. So that's a good sign that somebody's reading everything. And I was just curious as far as scavengers. Overall, are we still having scavengers or?
We we are, but it is decreased. I have to say there was some problem areas. I was routinely catching people. That those numbers have gone down. I think it's the increased patrols, them knowing that I'm out there on those particular days. Uh, I was talking about Monticello condominium complex off of Fairview and Vanguard. Used to be a hotbed for at least a couple of scavengers on Wednesdays. Um, I did not catch anybody last Wednesday. Even though I'm not catching anyone, I'm still following up with patrols to to at least have my presence there. So they know this guy's gonna be through here and it's a risk for me, so. Yeah, I think it's it's gone down, which is, you know, beneficial. And especially in your neighborhood as well. College Park has kind of slowed down with the scavengers and.
Right. Thank you very much.
Not a problem. And then the days of the scavenging contracts were were listed on the last page, one on Monday and two on Wednesdays.
And as we discussed, David earlier, I I appreciate you being out there and you hit the nail on the head, just presence out there. Goes a long way. And this month, it looks like only three scavenger reports. And I mean, when I first joined, it was like upwards of ten plus. So just being out there and as we've all talked about, you know, you could only enforce it so much, but it's like the All-Star game's coming, I think, soon. It's like one, two, and the third strike, you're out at some point. So keep up the good work. We're seeing the results because this is a it's just a problem. No one wants people rummaging through their trash. So appreciate all that you do and keep it up.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. That'll conclude my report. Thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Appreciate it. Item two, receiving file, the waste composition study. Mike, given it to you, Scott.
Yeah, I'll just start off with Vice President, so I'll be the Guzman who almost like introduced by consulting who performed our the waste composition study. This is, I believe, our second study we've done in a different neighborhood, so he's here to share those results with the board.
Morning, Board of Directors. On May nineteenth, Mike Valley for our contracts with NBC conducted a waste regulation study for the area of Hillybrook neighborhood. So he'll explain more of what was in that report.
Morning, Mr. Ball.
Good morning, everybody. Good. Bright and early, getting an early start on the day.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, basically, it was a Thursday T one route and what we did is we were at the CRNR Stanton Mike helped facilitate that. We dumped and took a representative sample. And what I did is I was looking specifically for organic waste within your your trash container. So that's greenways, that's food waste, it's also paper and cardboard and wood waste. I also broke out the easily recyclable beverage containers. One and two plastic. Again, what I characterize as trash would be sorry, am I not?
It's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what I characterize as trash was kind of a green sword standard. Film plastics, mixed plastics that weren't easily recyclable had contamination on them. I characterize this trash. Also, in the residential load, you have some, I guess you would call it grid, where you can't really tell if it's coffee grounds, organics, if it's dirt, if it's, you know, small materials. So the the trash figure, again, I made a notation that CRNR may be able to recover some of that material, but for my purposes, I was looking for organics which are prohibited container contaminants and materials that I thought were easily recyclable. So we're doing another study on Wednesday. Tomorrow, yeah. So again, I can grab all one through seven. If you guys are actually recycling them, I'm you know, not not certain on that, but that kind of explains the numbers and I'm here to answer any questions on what we saw.
Thank you for the pictures over there.
Yeah.
It's funny to see what people throw away in terms of food waste. They don't like dinner peas.
According to your picture, they go to Costco and they get.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. This is a kind of an ongoing thing with me, but just a question on the on the the one greenway, on the green waste picture. If if you look at that stuff, they look like palm leaves to me.
There, again, unfortunately, I don't have the picture.
Yeah, that's right.
Palm is a contaminant. But I think Mike was there. I don't know if this was a yucca or something, or is it was kind of an oddball plant, so it wasn't. I don't think a fibrous material because that's the problem with with palm is the long.
Okay, so it typically, we have told the residents that palm leaves should go in the regular trash. Okay, we're still you know what? I think you're I think you're right. Looking at this picture, I don't think that's a palm leaf. There's a it's it's called an ornamental bird of paradise. How do I know this?
Wow, very good.
I think that's what I have them in my yard. I think that's what that is, which is still a fibrous should go in the regular waste stream.
Okay, well, I will we'll see because again.
You know what? You have enough to look at, you know, this is just a specific thing to my interest, so I don't if you see it fine, if not.
Yeah, no, again, palm is a contaminant and the greenways.
Okay, that that's my main question. Any questions for Mike from? Okay. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it very much. We do have a member of the public who'd like to speak on this, Mr. Moser, you had your card.
Thank you, Vice President Schaefer, members of the board. My name is Jim Moser. As you know, I'm not one of your trash rate pairs. However, I am interested in this, so I have a number of questions. First of all, you have now two characterizations, one of them much better than the first. And the report attributes this to the success of the district's education program. So I'm wondering what we think is better about the education of the residents along this route than the education of the residents along the December route? Why are these better educated than the others? Number two. To get a complete picture of our waste management success. This was not all the trash from the people on this route. They also put out green organic carts. I'm wondering if we know we have the tonnage that was in the black carts. Do we know what the tonnage on the same day from the same homes was in the green cart? Have an overall picture of how much trash is being collected and how much is being recovered. And then of this that we see in the pictures, do we know how much of this green and organic waste would be recovered by CNR? CRNR out of this mixed cart loads presumably some of this is recovered rather than going directly to the landfill since it's going through the MRF. And then I was surprised, I was pleased to see the pictures, a little surprised to see that the trash when it's laid out is almost like when the people put it in the carts. I thought in the past that the trash trucks to maximize their loads had compactors in them that kind of squished all the trash together. So I'm surprised to see that the bottles are not broken and so forth. I'm wondering if they still do that and if that bags burst open and are causing more contamination of the paper and cardboard. And then the next to last question is how under SB thirteen eighty-three the contaminated paper and cardboard is being counted? Mr. Ballier says that all presumably the cardboard is contaminated with organics. And the cardboard itself is an organic, so all of that is organic. But this district and Newport Beach seem to provide no mechanism for disposing of contaminated paper or cardboard. So is that is there a penalty for that happening or or how is that accounted for? And then finally, as somebody who has some experience in experimental science, I noted this report like the last one is reporting the results with great precision to a hundredth of a percent. Based on seven barrels of trash that were taken out of a thing spread out in the yard. And this result is different than the previous one. Obviously, if we were to repeat this with seven other barrels taken out of the same pile, we would get different results. They wouldn't be precise to a hundredth of a percent as they're being reported here. And so I I don't know how practical this is. I would just point out if in doing the characterization, if the seven barrels were individually sorted, none of those would give a very precise result. But you would see the variation from one barrel to another. And that would give you a very good idea of if you picked seven different barrels, how much difference that result would be. So looking at the seven individually and then consolidating the result rather than putting all the trash together would give you not only a result, but also an idea as to how certain that result is or how different it might be if you collect seven different barrels. So just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. For Mike. Like Jim suggested, do you guys ever check the green waste? Burrows?
We can. I've actually sorted greenways at the Paris facility before to see the the contamination percentages. And also your hauler actually does sample studies. So in your your reports, you see you know, ninety-five percent of what went into the green cart was recycled, and this is how much was trash. You you kind of get a characterization of your green card already. It's the trash cart that's really unknown, and that's the one that shows us, hey, are people actually separating the food or are they continuing to throw it in? And you know, again, I agree, a two hundred pound sample may have some variance over the ten point nine one tons that was in the load. But I've sampled fifteen hundred pound samples and it it does take quite a while and the results are still not complete. That's only, you know, fifteen percent of the load. So again, we follow the state's methodology. It's completely random. We set out a grid and you know, we we actually roll dice, have a dice thing on my phone and it picks which grid, so we can't say, oh, this area looks good. Let's select this. You have to take the bias out.
That's good.
Best we can do.
While you're there, Mike, comment about the trash being compacted. Do you know which trucks are going to be sampled before? I mean, if they were compacted, that would make your work about.
Well, it had to be. It had to be with ten point nine one tons in in that truckload. It had to be. But again, a lot of those materials have memory to them, so when they're dumped out, they they expand back.
Back to where it was.
They're kind of held in place so that the truck can get more. But when they dump it, if you ever watch a truck dump, it's kind of like an accordion. It just spreads out quite a bit.
Well said. The other thing is and they they bust out. I'm getting answers. I think I already know the question, but it, you know, if you look at this food waste and the green waste, for example, in your in your study, that stuff has to go to the landfill now because it's contaminated, correct? I mean, you're not, you're not gonna take that. I mean, if you look at that food waste, now you could probably put that in an organic, but you don't. You absolutely don't. That goes to it's not going to go to the AD facility. Right? Because it's already contaminated.
We cover a lot of green.
Okay. Okay, all right, then I've I've staying correct. I appreciate.
That that's the challenge again, when the state decides what swat for them to say, okay, cardboard and paper are organics now and you have to recover seventy-five percent and a facility has to be a high diversion rate facility. In my opinion, that's the state's biased against mixed waste processing. They like source separation, so the regulations and what they count and don't count. You know, penalizes you more for having contaminated paper and cardboard. I want to keep it clean.
Thank you again, Brett.
Just as a different way of asking Mr. Mosher's question earlier about why this neighborhood is better educated or not, or is it random luck of the draw? I mean, do we find it? And I think I know the answer, but do we have any rationale that based on what your findings is why this is any different than the previous neighborhood?
It's conjecture on my part, but I I know that there's, you know, quarterly materials that go out. There has been a ramping up. You've had your program in place now for for quite a while and and this area appears to be getting it. I don't think a fourteen percent contamination rate is problematic. I think it's very good. If you're recovering ninety-five percent of what's going in the green cart and you only have, you know, fourteen percent in the trash that's organics, you're probably pretty close to seventy-five percent, which is the the ultimate goal.
Right, okay, and that's what I kind of figured. It's the more we've been educating in general, if you probably went back to that first neighborhood, odds are maybe that was improved too, I would think.
Yeah, yeah. And again, it's you know, how much single family versus duplex, triplex, fourplex, that the owner may be getting the material and not spreading it out on door to door education. So again, you can look through it more, but I think once you do a full year, which we're trying to do these quarterly now, you can see some trends. And again, the state's requiring basically once per route per year contamination monitoring. So again, there'll be more data that you'll have to look at.
All right, thank you. One more question. Wait. How does this compare to Newport's? Do you do a study like this for Newport Beach?
I don't. I don't consult for Newport. I audit their trash haulers, but that's.
Just just curious. Okay, there you go. Thank you. All right, let's move to item three, the shredding compost event.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. On a report of our successful shredding composting event that was held on June eleventh of this year. So turn over to Nubila.
Good morning, members of the board. On June eleventh, the district held its first free shredding and compost event. We had only had a compost event once before in twenty nineteen. This was at a site, a different location in twenty nineteen. We had it at the OCC Recycling Center. This year, we had it at Sansia High School. So this event was held in partnership with CRNR, who delivered compost or who provided compost and nine workers for the event. The Newport Mesa Unified School District, who assisted with the permits and making staff available to have the parking lots open on Saturday and the city of Costa Mesa, who provided four workers. Um, so a total of thirty-four workers were used for this event and seventeen from CMSD, four CAC volunteers, four city staff workers, and again, nine from CRNR. We used three shredding trucks from California Shredding Company. And the total of I was at a cost of two thousand six hundred and twenty-five. Residents were allowed to bring up to five standard file boxes per household and a total of eleven thousand pounds of paper was collected. For the compost event, CRNR provided a thousand six hundred and eighty bags of compost. And we promoted two bags of compost per household and a total of one thousand one hundred and twenty bags were given out or three thirty-three thousand six hundred pounds. Approximately six hundred and sixty-one cars participated. And that was at a total cost of, can you go down, please? To the financial section. So in supplies, advertisement, food, the district spent nine thousand one hundred and seventy-one. And the district also paid, there were ten non-exempt employees working. That was at a cost of three thousand four hundred and thirty-six. So the total cost for CMSD to host this event was twelve thousand six hundred and seven dollars. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just a comment for everything. And thank you for pink safety vest. I thought that was very appropriate. But thank you for all the work that staff did. Thank you to our partners. CRNR, you guys, I mean, thank you for for Mike Carey to be out there the whole time and thanks, Mike. I mean, it really I you know, Brett was the one that came up with this idea and we appreciate so much the partnership and that I I was pretty stoked. I mean, even even the people out there collecting stuff seemed like they were having a good time.
Yeah.
You know, and when you can have a good time and do good, there he is. There's the wearing his Chicago uniform there. But thanks for me, and I'm sure the rest of the board agrees, it was really terrific and and well done, very well done. Harley.
I just wanted to say the same thing. Thank you to everybody. I thought it was so well orchestrated. Truthfully, I couldn't believe it. Nothing left undone. It just, you know, one went into the other, even the people knew what to do. I was just so impressed. And of course, I was shocked that my new person on the board, actually, he's strong.
He's got a he's got a young back compared to the rest of us.
I'm not. I'm not. I'm not calling him a wimp anymore. Because he did, I was just shocked. My mouth was open. So anyway, thank you. It was it was a fun thing and and I hope we thanked everybody through a newsletter, you know, and just since we'll we'll be back again because it's needed. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm surprised at the total cost in a good way. That was probably one of the best twelve thousand dollars we've spent a long, long time. So again, I that was a good deal. I have a couple of questions. Yeah, go ahead. Okay. Did we have more than enough workers?
Yes, we did.
So you think you have too many, you're saying?
Yes. So next year, this again, this is the first time we offered both of the services. We didn't know what to expect. We I had stopped by the Newport event a few months earlier. And that was, that line was long. There's a lot of locks out and I think that terrified me, so I wanted to overplan and have more people than underplan and then have people waiting.
It just means that people in Newport have things they need to shred more urgently than people in Costa Mesa.
I think it goes down to the facility. Sansi is a perfect facility for what we were doing.
Yes.
You know, that facilitates less people because of the organization.
Yes, there was more cars because of the long parking lot, where cars were able to be in the parking lot versus waiting outside. So thank you so much for facilitating the.
No problem. Now, did that bathroom work? Okay, because they.
Yes, that was perfect. That was accessible for all.
Because we kept everything outside the facility, so they didn't have to go in.
You didn't have to go in deep anywhere, so that was perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and Nabilah, thank you for, and the entire staff. I'll echo what everyone, I mean, it was, it was a fantastic event. We had over six hundred some odd cars. The compost tour to C R R and R for your partnership in this for the first time, I really appreciate. And also breaking your backs out there too. So thank you, Mike, to all the people who volunteered and and were out there. Again, I said it out there, no one really wants to give up their Saturday and go work an event. So it was great to have everyone out there, and I think probably a decent team building. Because you get to, you work in your environment with your fellow employees, and sometimes it's nice to get out in the sun, and it wasn't too hot. So a couple of things that I agree with Director Perry, Astancia is perfect. Continue to, I I mean, my ultimate goal is to do this each and every year, and I hope we can budget and fund for that because I think the community, six hundred cars won't surprise me to get closer to a thousand in a year. I just did. I think I think the community will really benefit from this, and I'm always looking at numbers and to come in under budget. Awesome. And so different tweaks, I wouldn't necessarily decrease too much because a line of cars waiting will destroy the event too. So I'll leave that up to the experts, but but it was a great event, and thank you all for putting together. And hopefully we'll get another one in the in in the near future. Thank you.
I just wanted to add to it, which I almost forgot. A thank you to the city, because the city came through with their signs so that as you approached near Astancia, you knew what you were doing. So that was the city, and I'm sure Nabilah did that too with her. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we should show this at next liaison meeting as a possibility. I don't know if that's on your agenda or not. I think that would be good to see all of the, you know, the city, city, all of the different agencies looking at this.
Yes.
Is is there one coming up this Friday? Okay.
This Friday?
It's this Friday. That's why, that's why I brought it up. If we could possibly, do you have that on the agenda? Okay, sounds good. See, I'm not getting my email, so. I didn't get one either. Okay. We're at item four. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So since staff has been meeting with C R and R to negotiate a new contract for solid waste recycling services, but most notably to help us be in compliance with S B thirteen three. And in your staff report are the the deal points, I would call them the deal points that we have earlier agreed to, obviously ultimately has to be agreed to by the board, but this is what we agreed to in our in our negotiations. Obviously, you'll see in the staff report that the biggest deal point, I guess you'd say, is the third cart system is that we will be recommending a source separating system, no longer using mixed mixed waste system. So we'll have a blue cart there to collect recyclables like glass, aluminum, paper, cardboard, which could should help with a contamination issue. So the plan is right now, you know, every, all the residents typically, most residents will have four carts, they'll have two two organics and two mixed waste carts. So the plan is to remove, collect one of the mixed waste carts, replace it with a blue cart. And it'll be a ninety gallon cart. And they will, of course, would have to educate the public what goes in that blue cart. So we would have to do that right away. The the overall cost, again, I'm not going to go to all, you have any questions on all the other open report staff and C N R is here to answer those questions. But the the cost, there is a a cost to implement these programs. C N R is proposing a cost of twenty four dollars and eight cents, which is about a four percent increase from the from the solid waste rate study we did back in two thousand nineteen. What we're waiting for right now is hopefully we'll get tomorrow is a survey. C R and R is doing a survey of their customers of their rates to compare where the twenty four zero eight stands with other agencies. Hopefully, it's not in the high end, maybe more in the middle, but we'll know, hopefully we'll know more about that tomorrow. But that does not, the twenty four, twenty four dollars and eight cents does not include C M S D's costs and our overhead. So if you take that into consideration in our programs, you're looking at a proposed cost of twenty six dollars sixty eight cents a month, which is about ten percent increase. As you know, in two thousand nineteen, the board did adopt a five year rate, rate plan for for solid waste. Our next rate increase and or the last rate increase being twenty three, twenty four, which will be twenty four, ten. So we would have to do another Prop two eighteen hearing to do any kind of increase. Staff is not object, is not proposing do any rate increase or Prop two eighteen hearing until the beginning of of twenty twenty three. And then we'll go through that motion and get board's approval and ultimately go through the protest and 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 see where that goes. But yeah, so so we're planning on bringing the contract back to the board possibly in August, late August. The citizens advisory committee is going to be reviewing this this item tomorrow night. So I think you'd want to hear their comments as well. So today, we're not requesting any kind of directions, just more comments, feedback, and then we'll bring this back later to you for approval consideration.
I have a question because reading this, this is the blue cart will be a ninety gallon. Is there a smaller one?
Yes, sure. Residents for the one request a smaller one, they can request.
Okay, sure. That's good, because in my complex, a large one would not fit in the projects. It'd have to be a smaller one.
Sure, sure. And I think we believe that's going to be a a small majority of the population. Most people we hear about, they want the ninety gallon carts.
Yeah, because then the wording says we'll be a ninety gallon.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. On the carts themselves, I think I read so a ninety on the blue and a ninety on the standard black can. Is that correct?
Well, we're not going to switch out the ninety ga, I mean, if they have sixty five gallons, they they can have the option to go to ninety gallons if they want to. But we're not going to switch out the the mixed waste with a ninety gallon. Only car we're switching out is is one mixed waste with a ninety gallon blue cart.
Ooh.
Now, again, if residents want a ninety gallon cart, they request one, and we can get deliver one to them.
I would propose that that is, I would propose we make that as easy or automatic as possible.
E- e- again, you're going to, it's going to probably increase our cost then, because if you're going to, if you're going to request all the carts, we replace the ninety gallon carts, that's going to increase the the cost. That's why I think we should, I think we should go based on on preference. If they want any gallon cart, it's available.
Okay, well, I guess then, and that's fine. My question is, how are they going to know that?
Oh, well, they'll be educated. Yes.
Okay. Because in Newport, that education did not happen. I'm just saying. I I know, but same. And because because I I have to, I manage my mom's house, and so I'm very well aware.
What did they actually do in?
Woke up one day and the carts were all different, no mailer, no call, no nothing. And left behind two nineties. So for myself, it's not the worst thing in the world, but now my mom's got six, seven trash cans, and it's like.
What we might do, what we might do, considering is something what we did before we rolled out the organic recycling program, because bringing in the blue cart is going to be required a behavioral change. Right now, residents are going to have to source separate their recyclables. They've never been doing that for a while. This could be changed. So what we found was very successful before we rolled out the organic recycling programs, we had town hall meetings. We had eight town hall meetings throughout the community, and that was a huge success. It hundreds of people showed up, right? And so something we might want to consider again, doing some more town hall meetings.
And going back to my, the ninety. So they can request it no extra charge. Okay, all right. Then and then the the you'd mentioned the the rate increase of ultimately, it's going to be ten percent, give or take. And a survey is coming out, is that going to include what that rate does in comparison to all the other cities and and per existing contract?
Don't know exactly. I I believe what what the survey is is going to compare the actual cost of what we pay C R and R and what other cities are paying the C N R. So it's it might, it's it's just basically, it does, I don't know if it's going to cover the city's overheads when we see the rate survey. Because their overheads can be different than ours. So we just want to say what's their, what's their cost of C N R versus what our cost is.
Okay, I know. I would like to see, I mean, I think it's in our contract that we have to see that in comparison to the other cities.
Right.
Before I even entered, I'd have to see that.
Yeah, and we we'll always do when we do a a performance audit or force review of C R and R, we see hierarchy, so like Mike By has done it in the past, and he'll do favorable rate survey with all the organizations. So we do it that way.
Okay, that that's what I'm looking for. Okay, and then on the rate itself, if I'm reading correctly, at our, the the fifth year of the five year rating, customer rate increase, we can absorb this currently, or am I mistaken?
No, no, I think you're, you're going on to the next, next item.
Got it. Okay, gotcha. And then last question, on the contract, our existing contract, we're looking to adjust with these parameters. Are we are adjusting the 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 duration of the contract, the time of the contract?
That's all up to the board. That's, yeah, that's that's up to the board on what you want to do as far as duration goes.
But right now, this is all working within the existing contract and making amendments, correct?
Yeah, well, it'll be, it'll actually, no, it'll be, it'll be a new contract.
Are you sure? I thought Alan told us it wouldn't, didn't have to be a new contract. It could be just an addendum.
Haven't been involved yet, so I'm waiting to see the same thing because I I heard we hope to have a contract next month, and I'm concerned about the timing of that, so.
So, yeah, if it's a new contract, you know where I stand on that. Last time we spoke, Alan, you said it was essentially an amended contract, but it was, it could be viewed different ways. So we're doing all this, and it's starting to sound like a new contract.
There'll, there'll be a lot of, there'll be, you know, there'll be a lot of the similar language in the existing contract, right? But ultimately, you know, it's the new programs we're heading out with S B thirteen three, so it's it's new services, new terms. So my mind, it's it's a new contract.
Yeah, gen- generally, excuse me, generally, you'd want to restate and integrate the contract. But if there's a philosophical issue about that, and that requires that we make it an amendment so that philosophically, you can say you didn't do a new contract without a new term revision, and we can do that. But, you know, the preferred way, if it's too complicated, is to integrate the contract you have with the proposal for compliance with S B thirteen eighty three.
Right, and that's, yeah, okay, so the the, what what's the existing duration?
Ten years, and then after the ten years, the board has an option to extend it for another five years, assuming that none of the terms have been violated, but if they were, then the C N R has an opportunity to correct those 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 violations. And then it would kick in automatically if the board doesn't object, and then and then after five years, if you do again, another five years. So ultimately, it could be a twenty year contract.
Right, the existing without making any, and right now, we're five, six years in?
It was implemented in two thousand eighteen.
Okay, my math's not good this morning yet, but I gotcha. Okay, those those are the questions. I, ultimately, the the citizens advisory committee is going to look at this tomorrow, and then conceivably at the end of our, at our July board meeting, we'll get another update, not the final version.
Correct, right, because we've got a, so so to legal review, we we haven't even seen the draft contract yet ourselves, so it still has to go through legal review.
Okay, and again, I'm just speaking for myself, some of these questions, and I would like to see that come back, especially the duration. So I I really need to see that, what we're talking about and some further details. And I think we're, I think we're a few meetings away from getting all this put together, obviously. So that's all I have right now. Thank you.
I have one other question. It says a mixed cart, if you have two, you're going to get one removed. Is that official or?
Well, it has to be board approval on this, but that's what we agreed to.
Okay, what happens? Because a lot of, a lot of the homes in Mesa already have two of the mixed carts, the big ones, ninety gallons.
Right, so one of them is going to be, one of the mixed way carts will be moved and replaced with a blue cart. So we'll have one, they'll have one cart, it'll be strictly for black, a black cart will be strictly for trash, a blue cart for recyclables, and then they have the organic carts for the green waste and food scraps.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the the they're going to get much recyclables to compensate for taking away the second.
Well, you gotta think, yeah, you gotta think how much I, again, I can't, I don't know what's in there, but you gotta think they're going to throw away pipe, paper, and cardboard, probably in that in that mixed waste, so they can throw that into blue carts.
Yep, a lot of people in Costa Mesa recycle at OCC. That's, 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 and they get the recyclables and they get the money for it, you know, or that, like we drop off cardboard all the time.
Sure, sure, yeah. But it, but it's, we're going to have to give them a blue card, like it or not.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, I I've taken away the second mixed cart is.
Well, and again, they, if they want, if they want to keep that second, then we charge them a fee.
That that was going to be my point, is if they want two nineties, they're going to have three nineties. If they want three nineties, they're going to pay for one black one, right?
If they, if they have, if they have two black nineties, they're going to pay for one of those extra nineties. They're going to pay an extra fee for that extra black cart.
Whereas right now, they don't.
Well, right, you know, if they had a third cart, they would.
Yeah, yeah. You can deal with my friend on Iowa Street. Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just started making me think one last thing, but from experience, my, I live in a H O A little deal. So we've been on essentially a three cart for a while. The biggest challenge, I know, sounds crazy, is the recyclables, the the Amazon boxes, the cardboard boxes, all that stuff. People haven't figured out how to break down a box. I mean.
It's called a razor cutter.
I'm just saying, as we're educating, I I live next to some fairly intelligent people, arguably. These people will not break down their boxes, and so I'm just throwing it out there that while our bin's full, completely full, and I look, I go, yeah, it is, because when you dump box, I'm just saying that add some things about some basic common sense that we all think and take for granted. Not everyone thinks about how to break down a box, so.
So here's a thought. As wild as it makes sense, as we roll out the blue cart, when we rolled out the lime green cart, the organic cart, we have stickers on it that says, you know, here's what you put in here. Is there any chance on that blue cart that we could put a sticker that says, break down your cardboard?
Yeah, they'll have that on.
I don't know how much cost, I mean, it's obviously a cost factor, but just a a little sticker that says, break down your cardboard, that would have to make your jobs a lot of you, your hauler, your pickup guys a lot of you. I I agree with Brett. You look at these people. They don't, they not only not break down the cardboard, they don't put them inside the bin, they set them on top of the bin and expect your driver to get out and throw them.
Yep.
Which a lot of your drivers, I've seen your drivers do. But I, I don't, just a suggestion, that little sticker that says, break down your cardboard. So I don't, just.
Common sense isn't always.
I pride myself on that. I don't always succeed, but I pride myself. But other questions on the on the report? Thanks, Scott, for the update. I I think we've been waiting for this for a long time. Did you guys have any comments? Go ahead.
A little bit of clarification. Director Perry, in regards to folks that are going to OCC right now for their cardboard and their paper, there's no reimbursement or rebate that you would get typically for plastic bottles or aluminum cans. My hope would be is that it's more of a convenience. I think maybe folks take it there because they want to make sure it's clean and it gets recycled. So again, through the education process, it might be convenient, especially with gas prices, maybe not wanting to drive to take your cardboard and paper over to OCC and just put it in your blue cart at home. But I couldn't agree more with Director Echols when it comes to breaking down boxes. And a lot of things that we see in other cities that have the three cart system is unbroken boxes also tend to jam. And a lot of the contents don't get discharged because they shove the boxes in there, and they're all bulky. And we'll get a lot of repeat calls saying, hey, my cart was only half empty. It's usually those unbroken boxes that get stuck in there, and the stuff doesn't eject. And the other thing I couldn't agree more with education, and sidebar, I do want to reach out and get your your mom's address to find out. We did do several mailings, Q R codes, the city did mailings, social media, so I would like to dig into that a little bit more. But I think, as Scott said, and we are on board with, I think the town hall meetings are really the way to go, let people get a chance to come in. Let us explain to it, Mike, myself, we can bring more team in to pull people aside afterwards and have these conversations on the changes. But I think that what we find in most cities already that have the three cart system, I know everyone is scared in that thought of the ninety gallon, is that going to be enough, or the sixty five won't? We find, once people get adapted and educated, the black can, whether it's a ninety or sixty five, is usually the less full container, and the other two are the full ones. If they're doing it the right way, and they're source separating the materials, the two or other two, chances are, they may need an extra recycle or extra food waste. If they're doing it the right way and they're source separating the materials, the two or other two, chances are they may need an extra recycle or extra food waste if they're pulling everything out of the black. So I just wanted to add that.
You know, it's really funny, at those town hall meetings we did with the organic skirt, this came up over and over and over again when people got up to speak. They, these were people who would say, oh, I have a second home in wherever, and we do that already. Or I, I moved here from an area where we had four carts or whatever. So there's a lot of people that are already used to that, but that nudge, that friendly reminder is going to be really, really important to make sure that, you know, that I always think of people with the full cardboard boxes in there and you wonder what's inside the cardboard box. Maybe they didn't take out their, whatever that, or or there's stuff in there that we really don't want in there. Anyway, thanks, Julie, very much. Okay. Let's move to item five then, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So this, I so part of our negotiation discussion with CRNR, they're requesting a, a rate adjustment of 2.8%. And the stipulations that I made with CRNR is that we would recommend approving this 2.8% rate adjustment if we could absorb it in our existing budget. Right? Because if we couldn't, then that means we have to go back to a Prop 218 hearing, which costs more, adds more cost to us. So we did, finance did, look at the numbers and concur that if you want to consider approving a 2.8%, you can, and it would not, we would not have to go back to the rate pairs and ask for rate adjustments. I do want to make a comment that this recommendation is not a reflection of the service levels. As you know, we're still having some concerns with their service levels. And CNR has been, is doing, is trying to make improvements. For example, additional driver to the bulky item collection. So we'll have additional driver helping out on bulky items. They have two new units operational right now, two more coming online here real soon. But again, we're still experiencing some, a lot of missed complaints or trash carts being missed. So this is really the why we're recommending is really to, we understand CNR, just like everyone else, has had the impact on inflation. And so that's what we recommend approving this 2.8% cost to help offset some of the inflation costs that CNR is experiencing. And because we can absorb it on our budget, does not pass on the rate pairs, we're recommending approval. So happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions? Is that can be on the agenda for the board meeting for approval? We're not going to approve it today.
No, it's for the board meeting, for the board meeting.
Yeah, that's correct. I think that's what's, was the recommendation. Yes, bring back, because the CSC will be reviewing it tomorrow night as well. The Citizens Advisory Committee will review it tomorrow night as well. So I think you'd want to hear from them and then make your decision on July 25th.
A couple of items. So if I remember correctly, we discussed this item three, four months ago or whatever. And I could have looked it up myself, but I didn't. Do we recall what the initial ask was on the COLA?
I think it was 5.6%.
That rings, okay, gotcha. So we've come down. Now, you're saying in our existing budget, we can absorb this 2.8, correct?
Yes.
Now, but we're also looking at a, from item number four, an increase there. So no, we couldn't if you combine the two, which, which ultimately we're going to do over the next year. So our budget's going to take a hit no matter what when you combine. So even though this doesn't by itself impact it, we're going to have a rate adjustment that will crush our budget.
Ultimately, yes. Ultimately, the expenditures are going to exceed the revenue.
Yeah, okay. So there will be a rate increase to the, the rate pairs, it sounds like. Now, my question is then, my final question, I think, with this, why are we looking at this separate instead of a final rate to this amended new contract?
It's, it was a request by CRNR and they wanted to be put on the board's agenda this month and we agreed to. He said it was okay. It was a request by CRNR.
Just my personal opinion, I'll, piecemealing things doesn't, give me the final, final number. And we could debate and analyze and discuss that, but I don't like looking at them two separate things when both are going to impact our budget and our rate pairs in some form or fashion. So those are my comments right now.
I can disagree. I think we need to put that on the agenda for discussion and final approval for 2.8.
Okay.
That's it. Just seeing comments. So we'll, we'll bring us back on July 25th then, after you hear from the CSC.
Okay. All right, that, that concludes our items. A steady oral communications, the director comments.
Oh, go ahead. Okay. So I mean, where's that going to be held at and at what time?
Mesa Water District.
It's water. What is that, 7:30 or?
Eight o'clock, eight o'clock in the morning.
What, what's on our agenda? Okay, did you already send it out? Okay, so I haven't seen it yet. Okay.
If there's anything, if there's anything you want on the agenda, let us know. We'll put it on.
No, I think, I think the thing with Nabilah and the shredding, I think that's good. Yeah. Do you know what's on the agenda from us already?
Also, I just, I just had two items. I believe it was, it was the shredding event. Also, I'm hoping to have an update, as I mentioned, or that I'm trying to have a meeting with the fire department to do a, a US flag retirement ceremony. So I'm hoping maybe have something to report on by then, but I'm still, the chief just got back from vacation last week. I'm trying to get in touch with him again.
Did Tim Deutsch reach out to you?
Yes, he did. Yes.
Well, I had asked, I'd run into Tim Deutsch, who's the general manager of the Orange County Cemetery District. And we were talking about the flag thing and I thought cemetery district maybe, and he said, they, they have a program in place. So he reached out to Scott to offer, right, well, I'll let you when that comes up, but hopefully we can get some help from the Orange County Cemetery District. So Mesa Water, eight o'clock, Friday the 15th. And I assume I'll be representing President Newton if I can get up that early on Friday.
You will. I'll be in attendance too, if I can.
Something else? Just a suggestion, as we're talking about the liaison meeting, to add a request from the school district because when I've been meeting with their facilities over there over the past three months, 1383 is going to be a disaster from their standpoint. I would love to hear what they're doing. And so maybe request of the school district, hey, let's hear what, what the plan is because in meeting with their heads of their different departments, they're still not even sure, and that's scary. And which leads me to my next thing, and I take most of this offline, but I met with the chamber the other day and they're requesting a lunch and learn, half-day seminar, something in partnership with us. And I know most of the chamber, of course, is restaurants and it's not directly under purview, but I had thought if we got together with the city and the chamber, the businesses and offered something, because the restaurants are going to get crushed under this thing. And not just restaurants, but all commercial. And I'm sorry to the city, but this is what we do. This is what you do. City has a million other things that they manage. I think it would behoove us all to have that seminar partnership. The chamber would probably charge their members X amount if we would volunteer to Scott and maybe some staff members and someone from the city. I think it would go a long ways as we talk about education. So I would put that request out there. Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to comment on the new trucks. They're beautiful. They're really great. And they, they're so equipped. I've seen the drivers get out of the truck, take off the broom, take off everything and just sweep up. So it's really nice to see new trucks. Out of curiosity, how many are there? Okay, I, I, I only seen two and I just didn't know. Okay. And are we still going to have something on the truck? We are. Okay. So that.
I mentioned our general manager this morning that on my way in this morning, I saw one of your competitors' new trucks. I won't, I won't name, I won't name where, where disposal, but it's a new, oh, good. They, they had a truck that looked different. Do you know what I'm talking about? This thing looked like a looked like a sports car of trash trucks. I mean, it and I don't know what it picks up, but it didn't look like the standard truck. I was surprised. It was something, some homework for you, Carrie, to go figure out. I knew, I knew you would be, just, just like the Cubs pitching staff, you're on it. Anything, Alan, anything? Mark? Anybody else? All right, then I will adjourn our meeting at 9:03 and see you all or some of you on Friday morning.